Buddy, looking at the official timepiece up there, it's six oh one, eighteen oh one, whatever you're familiar with. So with that said, I call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you will all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all may be seated. Kevin, will you do a roll call to establish a quorum?
Yes, sir. Uh, Richard Gertler?
Here.
Randy Madison?
Here.
Lynette Simpson?
Here.
Chris Candelario?
Here.
Okay, and staying with following the agenda, number four there, we got items from citizens present. I just want to throw this out there to you, if you're here over the public hearing, and the possibility of changes being made to Beehive Homes, we're going to move on to that, but if we have any additional citizens here that have something that they want to bring before this board, now is the time. So, anybody else got something else they want to come up and talk about, or ring our bells about?
Mr. Chairman, a point of personal privilege, could you use a microphone? We cannot hear out here.
Um, can I use a microphone, Kevin?
Yeah.
Well, let's get one.
We don't have a sound system out there.
We don't have a sound system out there.
Oh, okay, well, we don't have a sound system, so I will talk louder, okay?
Does this one work?
Nope. These are for the radio station.
On the podium, does that mean it doesn't work?
No.
No.
No, we don't, we don't have any speakers, any place to make it work. The microphones work, but we don't have any speakers, so with that said, I'll try to talk louder. So, moving on to number five, let's deliberate and act on approval of the minutes held on the March twenty second, twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, everybody's had a copy of this, everybody's been able to look through it and read it. Um.
Make a motion.
Approve. Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes stated. I've got a motion from Richard.
Second.
Got a second from Lynette. Very good. Now we're going to move on to what I'm sure everybody in this room is here for. We're going to conduct a public hearing, deliberate and act on a request by Mr. Jay Manning to grant a special exception to his property that he owns Beehive Homes. Uh, I can go through and read this word for word. Um, so, required by ordinance, number six twenty-four, consideration of special exception by Mr. Jay Manning, Beehive Homes applicant, to permit a special use of individual units in an R four residential district located at fourteen sixty-five Tunisia Street, Ratone, New Mexico. Uh, approval of a special exception is requested by the applicant for the following tracks. Block A of the Bartilio addition to the city of Ratone, block five and six, block one of the Country Club addition to the city of Ratone. With that said, Mr. Manning, would you come up to the podium and tell us what you're asking for?
Thank you. I'm grateful to be here, grateful to be in front of you guys and the people of Ratone. My name is Jay Manning. Um, Beehive Homes is a franchise, and their business is assisted living. And, um, so, uh, it's a small home, it's not a big one. Uh, we have fifteen rooms in our home. And, uh, I happen to own a number of Beehive Homes in New Mexico. I own the marketing rights for Beehive in New Mexico, Arizona, Southern Colorado, and Texas. And personally own thirty-six homes in those states. And never came to Ratone to fail. But, uh, given the essence of the number of people here and the cost that it takes to be in an assisted living home, we have failed. And so, um, I have strived to come up with an idea of something I could do to stop the bleeding financially, because I'm still making the payments on the home. I'm still paying property taxes, insurances, and utilities. And, uh, those costs are, are high. I spent one point three million dollars building the home, buying the ground, and the franchise furnishing it and so forth. Um, up to this time of, time I've had that home, which was about to two thousand seventeen, uh, I think, I've lost about a half million dollars. And so that's why I closed it down, to try to think of something else that we could do with it. This is not the first time this thought has ever been done in Beehive, where they've closed a building and just leased out rooms. And, uh, um, now, assisted living business is generally for people who are older, who, who need, need help in their old age. Uh, they've, um, have reasons to be there. Uh, there's another part of our business, which is independent living, where people come in and they just live their lives normally. Um, and, uh, we don't, we don't particularly, uh, have people who need help in bathing, need help in toileting, need help with prescriptions, but it's just independent living. And that in essence is what I'm trying to do, is to have, be able to rent out the rooms that are in that home, um, so that I can stop the financial bleed. And as of right now, the report I have says that like eighty percent of the people in Ratone are on Medicaid. And so the time it takes, and this is what I'm trying to do, is get Medicaid so that it will help pay for the assisted living process. Um, and that is my hope, but it is a one year, it, it takes one year to get it, to go through all the applicant, applications, and the, the struggle to get, um, Medicaid for your facility. So my hope has been that I can just kind of have a independent living, uh, for about a year, and then I would be back and want to, uh, again operate the home as a, an assisted living home. Now, I understand what you may think, what kind of people would be there, but I've got house rules that would really limit, kind of have fine people, people who are educated, people who have a job, people that, uh, I can, I don't know how many are interested in my house rules, but, uh, um, overnight guests are not allowed. So the people that would be in there would be the only people that are there in the overnight. No pets allowed. Tenants must be employed. Tenants shall not steal or take under unauthorized possession of, with, or without intention to return the property to other tenants or landlord. There should be no fights, physical altercations, or verbal altercations. Tenants are not allowed to possess or consume alcohol or illegal drugs on the premise or, or, or the building. Tenants are not allowed to smoke. Tenants shall minimize noise ten to eight, um, to ensure other tenants and neighbors are not disturbed. Tenants are not allowed to have parties of any kind on the premises of the building. Tenants are allowed to watch TV in the living room, common area. However, selection of the program will be by consensus, consensus of those residents. Tenants are allowed to use the fridge and the kitchen and common area. However, tenants are not allowed to take over more space in the frid- fridge than reasonable necessary. Tenants shall clean up after themselves after using common areas. If bed, if bedbugs are found on the premise, tenant shall immediately notify the landlord. Those rules will eliminate, uh, a lot of people that would not be the kind of people that, that the neighborhood, the neighborhood would want to be renting in their neighborhood. Any questions?
Yeah, what, what would the name of this business directed towards us, okay?
Well, it's for him. I, I have a question. Great rules, who's going to enforce the rules?
I have a lady here that lives here.
One lady?
Well, if, if she needs some help, we'll have help.
And I also have a question about the kitchen facility.
Sir, sir, you know what, I'm going to stop you right now. That, this isn't how this public meeting works, okay?
How is it working?
You're going to have a chance to come up and talk and ask your questions after him. He is asking questions of the board right now, and we're going to make sure that we stay very orderly, calm, and everything, and we're going to go from that point on, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, so, Mr. Manning, what is the name of the business going to be called?
It would, it would be Beehive Independent Living.
Beehive Independent Living, because I'm reading your application here, the original one that you submitted, and you put here, um, I want to rent rooms in my fifteen unit to adults that are twenty-one, who can live on their own.
Be independent, are independent. I'm not providing any caregivers in the building.
Right, so what would be the difference between this and a motel? Or what if we called it Beehive Boarding Homes, or, or boarding? I, I guess I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around independent living and where you're going with this.
Well, it would be peop- people, uh, for example, um, are, so I've been told the hospital operates with a lot of doctors and nurses and other medical people that come here for three months to six months type thing. And, and, and my home would be a perfect opportunity for them to have a place to live in more of a home-like setting than it is a motel.
Okay, I, I've got one more question, then members of the board will ask you questions also. Um, so in other places that you've done this, um, I'm not familiar with your building, is there a bathroom in every room?
Every room has a bathroom. Every room has a heater, air conditioning. Every room has a TV about that size. Um, maybe not quite that big, but up there. And, and so every, every room would have a lock on it so that the, uh, the people renting, renting it could feel comfortable about the security of that room.
Right, so, so what I hear you explaining to me is basically an extended stay motel with a lock on every door, bathroom in every room. I'm assuming there's a shower in there also, so they don't have to use a community shower and those types of things, so. I, I guess, um, that's, that's just my thought on it. Uh, other members of the board, uh, got questions for Mr. Manning before we move on?
Um, I do.
Lynette?
So, um, I did, um, go by and I did look at the parking, the parking lot, and it doesn't look like the parking lot is, I think there are counted six regular parking spots and two handicap parking spots for fifteen units. Um, how would we, I mean, that's not enough parking if everybody has a car.
I would, I would extend the parking lot. I own the land next to the lot that the Beehive is on, and it would be easy enough to come in there and make the parking lot sufficient, big enough for, to have fifteen cars on there.
Okay. Richard, got anything?
Did you do any research besides the hospital for people that, that would be using this, and you're saying a thousand to two thou- uh, twelve hundred dollars a month rent? And I question that aspect, that you would be able to get that many people to have short-term stays, or however it is, six months, or two months, or three months?
Oh, it's renting it monthly, so, minimum of one month.
Yeah. That seems like an awful steep, uh, cost to have a hu- a house that doesn't have any cooking facilities except a community ki- kitchen. And that, that sounds to me that, I know I wouldn't want to live there and have to share a refrigerator, a, uh, eating facilities, and then have to carry my stuff back to my room and so forth. So, I don't think that this would be what I would think, that would be conducive to getting people to live there.
Anything else?
No.
Chris?
Uh, sir, why, uh, why did you close up in the first place?
For the lack of residence.
I unders- excuse me.
Lack of residence?
Lack of residence, uh, elderly people that want to live there and be careful.
You know, I'm concerned because Ratone is probably eighty percent elderly re- elderly residents. Uh, my other concern is probably fifty, even maybe sixty percent of these people I see out here have been or are independent contractors. They have to follow the rules, they have to follow the zoning. If they don't, they're fined, they're shut down. And I have a bad time trying to figure out, trying to determine why, uh, your special exception should occur there. Do we give everybody a special exception because they want to change their business? I have been an independent contractor for forty, fifty years, and there's a lot of stuff I wanted to do, but I could not do uh, because of zoning, or somebody not, uh, agreeing with what I wanted to do with my property. I understand you have a monetary cash flow problem, but you have over a hundred other businesses, am I correct?
No, I, I personally and my son's own thirty-six homes.
Thirty-six homes. You have cash flow, you have a way to take the loss until, for twelve months, whatever your time is. If you were, if this was your one-man band, then maybe I could consider it. But you have, you know, you're a corporation, you have money coming in. You're not making any money off of this asset. Again, as independent contractors, we all have something that's not making money for us, but we have to either get rid of it or bear it and, and see it through. That is my observation.
So me running the assisted living ha- home, which I could, right? I could go open it again as an assisted living home.
Uh, we'd have to look at how long you've had it closed. You'd maybe be right back here before this board, remember?
Maybe, maybe.
When you clo- I was on the committee when, uh, you came in and, and applied and did everything, and upon closure or sale of the business, the special exception sunset.
Okay.
So, so you would have to come back and do it all over again too.
Okay.
But, but I'm just throwing that in there, and what else would you like to add?
If I came back in and said, look, I just want to open a facility that takes independent living people?
Define, define independent living people?
They don't need somebody to help them bathe, or shower, or get their meds. They don't need anybody to provide, they, you know, they can drive if they want to. Uh, these people that I have been taking care of are, are people who need those, um,
Correct.
things. And, and our ho- our home i- is a very nice home. It's not a, a low-income housing project, and it's a very nice home. And I just don't know that, uh, what I'm asking for is so far off of what we have been using it for all the time. And I just need some time that I can get my, uh, Medicaid so that I can, that people who are on Medicaid can use it to help them stay in the Beehive.
So then you'd have to come back and ask for an assisted liv-
Right.
Well, sir, at this time, um, from reading your statement that you sent to the city, saying that you need to do this so that you stop hemorrhaging money and all these types of things, uh, you want to rent this. You disclosed a copy of your contract that you, uh, probably pulled off the internet, the way it looks to me.
No, I had a lawyer do that.
Okay, so month-to-month lease agreement, and then you got your rules, which you read to everybody and everything. Um, at this time, I'm going to pause this hearing because, um, I don't feel that you've met any of the requirements for a special exception, and they are. Other uses may be permitted under a special exception if in the board, in the opinion of the board of adjustment, the proposed used is not offensive or incompatible in keeping with the character of the district. I'm sorry, but you're running a thirty-day rental property, is all I see. Some- somewhat of motel, like I said, is it going to be Beehive Boarding or whatever? So I'm going to stop this hearing right here. Um, keep in mind, you, you put in here that you need the money and stuff. In a R four district, you're not supposed to have commercial properties. The reason this board even considered looking at a special exception for you back in twenty fourteen and fifteen is because there was a need probably for an assisted living. We, we didn't have them and this kind of stuff, and, and I still think there's a need for it in this community. Um, we have one over, uh, Moulton, that's somewhat doing okay and stuff. But at this point, I'm going to pause this hearing if you said everything you want to hear, say, and this board's going to deliberate whether we're even going to continue with this, because I don't feel you've brought adequate stuff forward for us to even consider a special exception. You know, what is the help to the community? How is it staying in line with our, our four residential district and these types of things? Like, like I said, I see it as a rental. Okay, you're, you're there trying to rent property, to make money, to stop your hemorrhaging and stuff, and tha- that is a commercial situation. We've already, we've also got some legal opinions from back in, and I don't know where I put mine, but I saw Lynette's a few minutes ago. You know, a long time ago, a lawyer, um, stepped up and made the comment that under no circumstance should a commercial business be allowed in an R four area. Now, this board has the right to go against that and say, hey, you know what? We think that this would be a benefit, having assisted living in Ratone and everything. So we worked, we, we, uh, rezoned some of the property out there from the county to the city and all these types of things, so we could make this work. A- and when you came in and approached this start with, I, you know, I was on this board. I, I thought you were here for a lifetime as Beehive Homes. A- and I think as it has, an assisted living and stuff, it fit in well. As a place to rent rooms out, I don't think so. I, I would not be happy to live in that area and have, uh, different people coming in and out every thirty days and this kind of stuff. A- and yes, you got your rules, and you're saying you're going to rent to nurses and doctors and things, but, uh, you know, I, I just can't even see if we can move on with this. So at this point, I'm pausing this hearing. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, let, let's have a discussion here, if we should even move on with this hearing, because, Chris, you pretty well said it, you, you don't understand what we're doing here, but, um, you know, I need all your input, this isn't the Randy Madison Show.
At this point, uh, what are his options? I know one option is to vote for this, to vote against this, or to table this. If we table this, when we adjourn, the motion goes away.
Yes.
That's what our table is.
Yep.
Okay, now, if we table this, he still has the option to go to the city commission and appeal?
E- even if we flat voted down, he still has the option to go to the city, city commission and appeal.
We, we are an advisory board, we try to screen things for the benefit of the people, try to make things better for the people in Ratone and the businessman. I've been a businessman forever, I know what you're going through. But, uh, uh, again, I would make a motion after this comments from everybody, that, uh, we table this motion and adjourn where as he has the option and the right to go to the city commission and make his appeal there.
Um, just a question, we're having a discussion here. What, why would we make a motion to table and just not make a motion to vote it down, not granting a special exception?
That's what I meant, when you said pause.
No, no, I, I paused the public hearing, because the next step in this public hearing is he sits down and all these people stand up and come up here and tell us why they don't want it, because that's why they're all here. I mean, we know that.
I, I, I misunderstood your point.
Okay, so, you know, we're, we're having a discussion here. The first thing I would want to see is a motion to stop the hearing at this point. That way we did it as a board, not as Randy Madison. Then we turn around and I would accept a motion either to, uh, accept a motion to deny his, uh, his special exception, because he hasn't brought us anything to work with, as far as I'm concerned. I, I mean, a- again, I need you guys' input, because I don't want to be the only one getting sued. So, so, so anyway, I mean, that, that's what's up for discussion, Chris.
It is.
Lynette?
Um, I ha- I do have serious concerns. Um, when I looked at the lease and, um, it talks about that, uh, the premise shall be utilized for residential purposes, only occupancy shall be limited to tenant's immediate family. That's not fifteen people. That could be five people in a room, if that's your immediate family. I have concerns about that. I wouldn't, um, is it, uh, two parents and three children occupying a room with a bathroom? Could be, so, I mean, there's lots for me to think about, um, house rules. I know you said somebody would be there, how often would they be there, monitoring? Um, fifteen people, I mean, I, I have security, um, questions. Um, and as a resident, if I was to live in that subdivision, I would be concerned about that also.
Richard?
Well, I have concerns about granting, uh, an exemption in an R four. I just, I, I just don't see why we should do that. He failed once, how do, how do we know that he's not going to fail again?
I, you know, your, your point. Go ahead.
Question. Uh, when you closed up, did you have clients?
Yes.
How many?
The, when we closed up, we had three that ended with us.
Okay, so, so you had income from this property at that point?
We had revenue.
You had revenue?
Yeah.
Well, at this point, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would entertain a motion from one of you to stop this hearing, and then we'll move on with a vote on the other issue from there, because I, I just don't feel. So I've got a motion to, to bring this hearing to a stop. There's no need to go any further with it, because I do not feel Mr. Manning has made a reasonable case as to why we should let him open his property up as a thirty-day rental property in a residential area. Um, assisted living is altogether different than what you're talking about, as far as I'm concerned. And granted, I'm, I'm one vote on this board, but, but, you know, I just don't see it the way you see it, okay? And that's why we have a board, there's four of us up here, so again, like I said, it's not the Randy Madison Show. So with that said, I would entertain a motion, and Richard actually gave me one. So I have a motion to bring this hearing to an end. Do I have a second?
Do a second.
Chris seconded it. So with that said, the hearing's over, okay? That, the next reason of, of, uh, business that we have to take care of is this board has to state what their findings are. And our findings are, listening to Mr. Manning and, and what he brought forth to us, also reading his letter that he gave us of what he's trying to do right here, and his original application. Um, I don't think he has reasonable, uh, means to bring forth and ask for a special exception. So with that said, I would entertain, and that's the board's findings, okay, that's us as a group. So with that said, I would entertain, and that's the board's findings, okay? That's us as a group. Then I would entertain a motion from the board to either grant him a special exception or deny him a special exception. So I need a motion from one of you to do that.
So, Mr. Madison? I, um, I move that we deny Mr. Manning's special exception.
So I have a motion.
I'll second it.
To deny Mr. Manning's exception. I have a second by Mr. Gertler. Uh, Kevin, can you do a roll call for this, being, this will be going to the City Commission and who knows where else?
Okay, Richard Gertler?
Nay.
Uh, Lynette Simpson?
We're denying it, so.
We're denying, so I'm, yes, yay.
Okay, I, I, I changed mine then.
Yay.
So yes to deny, okay.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, Lynette Simpson?
Yay.
Denied.
Yes.
Uh, Chris Candelario?
Yes, denied.
And Randy Madison?
Yes, denied.
Okay.
Uh, with that said, um, if we could take a ten-minute break, if some of you that are here wanna leave, we've got a few more things to, uh, move on to on our agenda. But with that said, um, we, we had the public hearing, we deliberated an act, and at this time, Mr. Manning's special exception has been denied by this board. Again, Mr. Manning, you can take it to the City Commission. You can take it to the City Commission. You, you've got, is it sixty days?
Yes.
You've got sixty days to appeal it to the City Commission.
Thank you.
You best.